Do you need anything else?
No, thank you.
Wait for it.
This rock star. You mean this rock star?
Did you get the assignment sheets?
Yes, thank you.
I looked for them. Assignment sheets, I didn't find them.
We're ready, it's recording.
Well, if you're not gonna do these one twenty three.
Sure, we'll wait on this.
And those seven.
Okay, my motion that we open the meeting. Okay, first thing that we're gonna do, we're gonna. I move that we. Both phone review the minutes and approve of the minutes so we can. Deal with Mr. Kelly. Here a second. Second. Favor.
Hi.
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 Okay. So Jim. You call it up here, Sharon, we can just done.
What's that, my neighbor built this pool and part of my land. Friend is pushing down with this.
Yeah, I know, I've got the phone to that. Yeah, that's. But if you're just straight out with them.
Yeah, I, I, he's gonna pay me fifteen hundred. I probably encourage double that.
Really?
Well, with the surveyors and the lawyer and what. I just want to straighten that.
You get, you get the swim in the pool?
No.
Oh, that's. That's not the part of the deal. Okay, I believe we have all the paid work here. The checks. Two checks.
No.
Twenty five dollars each. We actually have, Jim had actually done this. Some of it twice. Yeah, but he didn't, he didn't, I don't think he had everything the first time.
Yeah, he needed more.
More copies.
Yeah.
With that, they send the whole other set of them.
Yep. Well, we have those here. But you guys. Pardon me?
Should be two of them.
Oh, the. Don't.
Yeah.
Yep, and those in there. Okay, so look at.
I don't want to see you make a difference.
Yeah, me too.
I thought you said.
This is the. This is this swimming pool.
Mm hmm.
And Jim, you can get.
Yeah, I think I still have enough, plenty of frontage, it's not cutting any frontage out, it's just. It's four point five, I think it's four point five acres. It's well over the two, I guess.
It's got his three hundred feet of frontage. To some. Required, so. Everything there, just taking a little bite out of that, the side of it there.
Yeah.
He's the neighbor. Unfortunately, but assuming feels. For Jim to share in, but use that.
So you're. You're not. You're not slicing out for a.
Just that little section, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even know how much it is.
Not a lot. Okay. It's an above ground pool, too.
Yeah, yeah. End of day.
It would fast last a moon.
Well, I don't know, I didn't see, didn't sound like he wanted to move it.
Of course not, he likes it back where it is. No, but it's not further than.
So, yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Any further discussion? No.
And make a motion that we approve the lot split for. Mr. Kelly.
Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Great.
Yeah, and if everybody wants to get back up and sign.
Yeah.
Got here for.
We got right here. One thing through.
Yeah. Sign a copy for.
We, yeah, we end up signing it all, but he needs the M I R. He needs to bring it to. The, now the town.
Okay.
And she has to sign off. And he can have one time.
He's my. Eight. It's today.
So she keeps the M I R?
No, you bring it to registry.
Okay, got it. Oh, she just has to sign off on it?
Yes, because there's. Just got twenty days or something like that.
Okay. Is she into it?
Yeah, I saw her this morning, so.
Yeah.
Kinda hard, but she's sending out.
Sure.
Well, you want a regular.
Yeah. But for the other one.
Now we get a sign. Three thousand. That'll get you out of here. And we need to have the copy of his form that he sent. Or he sent him. I guess he's assigned. You know, because she needs to.
Okay.
We sign that and you put that in the M I R. She's supposed to send us a copy, but.
Okay.
Unless we follow up, it doesn't happen.
So you have to sign this.
Wait for that. There. It was given to me by a good special person.
That's right. Just a few.
Well, just the two for now, we'll.
From over there.
Over here.
Yeah. Came out of that.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Jim. Your address and. Sure. I borrow a pen, yeah.
Sleep is stopped.
I wasn't sure it was sleeping. One probably half table waiting to.
It's not got anything.
They don't. Twice.
Nope.
Oh, all right, Joanne is usually so good at this. Trust her. People here waiting to get in.
Yep.
Okay, do I have to bring that to her, the town clerk? Or you do?
Um, you can.
He brings those too.
Okay.
And now we should put a sticky on that to say, I guess.
Sir, I'm gonna keep this one.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want me to go get Joanne?
And he takes just a M I R copy?
He, if his M I R copy goes to the registry of land deeds and hand account. So he takes that to there.
Do you want me to get Joanne?
With that one, he won't sign one, right? Feels perfect. And that. Okay, give it to the town clerk.
That's up.
You're all set with the checks, I don't have to give those to her.
Well, yeah, we'll take care of that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So do we keep one copy of that transmitter form?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got one in. Keep that one.
Yep.
And what happens to all these other copies just out of curiosity? You keep?
They go to the various boards.
Oh, yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
You're very.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thing does not want to work.
Orange shadow. It's not like. Well, it was looking fine last night.
Did it pop the. Breaker? Color strip.
Never happened before.
I plugged in my laptop, so it went.
Did you go up?
I plugged, plugged it.
I know nothing about.
No, this is plugged into a tool, it's working.
That's not, nothing. The light is green. A pair of plugs comes in all the time. I don't see anything there that's.
It's on, okay. So there's all that.
My laptop's freaking disviled.
Seems like it's off right now, right? All right, now I'm supposed to push it twice to turn it on. There it goes.
But it was on.
Could be the ball.
Um.
Well, that's just.
And they can still hear you.
Yes.
So maybe just tell, tell the audience, have somebody sit and let people in up here and tell the audience, you just have no picture, but they can, they can talk. All right, guys, so don't ask anything else. Okay, everybody's in.
No.
Not, who's not?
They're both in.
No, she was like. I don't know why that says not joined, I have never seen that before, but when they come in, it pops up right there, it says. What? It just says ask one, they're all in here.
Yep, yep.
They're all in, I don't, I've never seen that before, I don't know what that means. I don't see her coming in, but she would. Response. So you're good at the moment, and if you just talk to your audience and tell them they can hear you, I think. Should we mute that? Should we unmute everybody and so that they can at least speak?
Yes.
Having trouble with the video, guys, bulb must have burned out. So everybody.
We can. We can hear you okay in the audience, just no video, which is fine.
Okay, so I guess you just have to keep track of letting people in. I just pop it up here once in a while, let's see. Again, the nine just woke up. Coming out about that.
I've been so young.
My partner went first, I must have been more. On line and said, hey, I have a check here. And said, no.
And we'll have to sign off on all the other copies, so that it's more so we do the distribution.
Yeah. Let's just keep moving on. Sign us after, okay?
Right, we need to get rid of some of those papers. Got that something. He's willing.
So. We finished Jim Kelly's last one. Let's. Move on to. Review position decision process for. So that's gonna, that's gonna take us a bit.
Yeah.
Kind of closer work. But let's move on to. Review the subdivision. Division plans for eighty nine Chester Road and Huntington Road Solar Projects. I will take a look at those. Do a shore review, see if everything's here. Or we review them. Individually and. Talk about it. And. Any, any questions that we have, I think we can tell over the next week or two. We're not gonna be able to get, look, look at all this stuff today. And review the whole thing. Study it with. As much as we can. So. And those are the other group. And. But in this point.
I didn't burn, yeah.
Would you mind helping her carry some stuff? Andrew and Chris. We're gonna take a look at this stuff. We're not gonna do a full review today, it's gonna take some time. So I'm gonna take a, a look at it, make sure it's there. And. If we have any immediate questions, we'll address those. Right now, today. If not, we will. Definitely invite you back to our next meeting.
Andrew Ham, Weston Sampson. Greg, that sounds good. Do you have an indication? I know you guys have the vote coming up and it seemed like we're, I, I think I saw on the agenda that it's. The regular planning board meeting is postponed. Just for coverage on our end, do you have any indication when you're thinking for that meeting?
Um, I, I'm thinking with it, I'd like to meet, we got a lot of work to do, so I'm, I'm hoping if we. All agree on the planning board to a date. I'm over with getting together. Two weeks from today, possibly. That's what I'm thinking.
The hearing supposed to be.
The hearing seventeenth of. November with.
Fifteen days from now.
Yeah. So. If we could possibly do it earlier, then we'll do it, but we, we need to discuss that with the planning board first. So we can. I'll be here.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good, just wanted a loose indication so we can kind of plan around that, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, let's spread this stuff out here and take a look at what we got. You want to give them?
Just.
If you said. Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah. This one, I see this. Three people's got a coffee. Think. Yeah, so. Maybe you thought. So. But copies.
And we've got.
Well, they're all horizontal, so we can't really hang them and see. Is, is there other paperwork that came with us?
It's moved.
Yeah. Looks like. They changed the access road to. A different print.
Yep. So they're submitting one, two, three.
One, two. Three, I believe, but. Oh, this is.
Yeah.
That's a different lot, too.
We're breaking it into three now. And that's after the cutaway.
Yeah. What do we see first?
Three separate lots. One of nineteen point four. Which is gonna be two point nine six acres. Nineteen point five is gonna be twenty four point seven three. And nineteen point three is gonna be six point two two. Eight seven three.
Three.
Yeah. And then nineteen point three is gonna be six point two two.
TV. Yeah.
What was that, Sarah?
What's that?
The, the ones.
Nineteen point three, six point two two. Nineteen point four, two point nine six. Access road.
Cause he access what it was over here. What's.
Huge change.
If I can chime in, Mr. Chair, I, I believe. If we're discussing eighty nine Chester Road, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So the difference, I, I think you're talking about is the access road for the proposed solar, which is separate from this. This access road move to be in compliance with section seven of the subdivision bylaw for residential lots. We had to move it because of the grades required to incorporate sidewalks, curving, embankments. Et cetera, from a technical standpoint.
Okay.
That's moving.
Access.
That's moving access to the solar field as well.
This is a separate submission from the solar. If I can propose, thinking of those two submissions as separate. While the town thinks about the solar decision. And their next steps with that, this would be for the preliminary plan for a subdivision for residential. So. These are kind of two separate things, it would not move access for a separate project, but for the purpose of this preliminary plan. If residential lots. Were to be built here, this is how we would have to put the road into the site. To comply with the subdivision bylaw that the town has.
I understand that, but.
Which proposed lot is being submitted for subdivision?
Uh, lot, lot nineteen point one. As currently exists, nineteen point one, it's on sheet C. One oh one, the key plan for the site.
We'll take this back.
So just let me know when you're looking at that.
Did it right there?
What was that, sheet C, you said?
Yes, C for Charlie, one oh one, titled key plan.
One oh one.
But which proposed lot would be for the residential nineteen point three?
Correct, nineteen point three and nineteen point five. As designated proposed lot of area six point two two and twenty four point seven three acres. There is a third proposed lot that already has an existing building that is Lloyd's home. It's the more trapezoid looking lot to what would be the north of the site.
Nineteen point four.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yes. Sort of separating out.
Why?
Here.
Yeah.
A lot here. This whole thing.
Yeah.
In the back one, too.
One, two, three.
Don't have.
That's.
That's an existing.
Yeah, another property.
Property, yeah. Okay. Let's compare. I'm just wondering. I'm sure the fact. Oh, okay, I'm thinking, yeah, okay, it's just, it's, this has got nothing to do with. Solar did the, it's just a lot split. Yeah. Is this a contingency plan for the solar or what, why is this?
I, I can't really speak to it from Blue Age's standpoint, Mr. Chair. They asked us to prepare this, I, I believe it would be. But I, I can't speak to it, I can certainly pull them in if you would like to ask them, I, I can try and pull Aaron in, who was at the meeting the other night.
I, I can ask the lot owner, Lloyd, can you give us some insight on this?
And at this time, no. According to. I'm not sure how this plan came about.
Okay.
However, when I first saw the. Per test location. And the proposed road. That's moved up uphill, it's moved up further south rather than where it is today. I had mentioned to conservation saying. Wouldn't it be a lot easier to put a road further south than alongside of eighty seven? Which is an uphill climb? And then they're worried about water washout and everything else. It's further south, you don't have to worry about the washout and water. I don't think either way you really have to worry about water washing out, but. It'd make more sense if the roads was further stuff. Another, another issue would. Another, another issue would be is. The plan is how do you tie? Detective view. On the plans, there are five poles. Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are five telephone poles that basically would run alongside your proposed driveway, current driveway. If those poles were moved to the south. Alongside the tower property. As a driver coming from Blanford to Chester. You would have gone by the poles and not see them at all. However, if you're going from Chester to Blanford, those poles would be blended in with the maple trees in the background. And it really wouldn't. Obscure that, uh, make the view worse. I mean, you really wouldn't notice it that much. Especially with, uh, the trees and the leaves are going on and everything else. Those poles will be shorter than the row of maple trees that are along the edge of the tower property now. But that's, I do not know. Um, what they had and planned for that.
So is this proposal in lieu of no solar field being built? Because I guess I'm, I'm confused on why the board is even reviewing this if we have a current project in front of us.
I can answer that.
The big fellow, what says?
Andrew, what do you, what do you know about this? To address those questions.
Uh, Lloyd was cutting a little bit in and out there. Um, I think just from potential distance to the mic, but yes, I, I believe Lloyd mentioned the pole lineup first for the solar facility is five poles. Um, that is of course separate from this. And to my knowledge, this is just kind of what Blue Wave asked us to prepare. Um, in the event that something changes with the solar. Um, I, I'm not too privy of it outside of that, other than being directed to prepare it and submit it to you folks as a preliminary plan for subdivision. Greg, I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm happy to try and pull Blue Wave in if you would like me to.
Um, I, I think at some point we're gonna have to hear from, from Blue Wave as.
I think we could consider it, yes.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, until we get more answers, I, we're. We need, we need to come up with more questions on this and get some more answers before we consider it.
Who's the landowner? Who's, who's submitting this?
Who, who, yeah, who, who's submitting this?
Do we have the form B? Did they formally come through the bill?
Yeah. So.
Just to, I'll, I'll chime in, Greg, it's the applicant in this case for the subdivision is the same. It's Peoples Brook LLC. Doing business as Blue Wave, um, or Vice Mercer. The landowner is still Lloyd, I believe, and that should both be on the Form B, um, that was submitted.
Okay. We, uh. Well. Andrew, Andrew made up Form B.
I, I got that, but I want to see what he wrote on it. Who's the actual applicant?
And I just can't see it. And I believe that's you talking, but it is the applicants listed under um, the Form B that we submitted, less than Sampson. Um, it's about halfway down.
We were looking for the Form B. We didn't have it with the, with the.
Yeah, I found it here.
Um, and this chair, I am gonna ask Blue Wave if they can drop in. Um, just while we're discussing if anything else comes up, but I will ask them to join. So you were able to get the questions answered you want today.
Yeah, you can, you can have them join. I don't know if we'll get all the questions answered today. Cause we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at it more. I'm sure we're gonna have more questions, but. If Blue Wave can drop in and answer our initial questions, that's the bit.
Well, they're saying it's. They got the signature, the person who's a property of. You know, Mary, so they would need it. To do a self dissection, you would need an action.
Change.
And Mr. Chair, and on, um, that same C one O one page, in case if you need it, all of that info as to the record owner, the applicant, sub divider and engineer is listed in the top right corner of the plans under notes. It's the first one, two and three. That way you don't have to scan all over the plan for who owns what and who's applying, et cetera.
You can say that in the town.
Yeah, but we, we need signed documents. Yeah, we, but we need the applications, so that's the Form B. But we got a lot more forms that need to go in there. But if they don't own the property.
Did you get hold of Blue Wave, Andrew?
Uh, they should be joining shortly. I'm just gonna go off mic to make a call as well. Well, email goes through the void and back again.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue to look at this stuff. So Lloyd.
Yes.
On the application is. Peoples Brook LLC, so they, but they don't hold the deed, do they?
I know, it's not.
So in order to think it, in order to. Even apply for subdivision, it would have to be from the person who owns the deed to the land.
Both my signature and Mary's signature was on release form for them to do so.
Oh.
Yeah, that was included. There was a, where they said that you were.
Let me see if there is a release form.
They're, they're signed on Form B, I don't think. There are additional forms that.
But like, you wanted to get perk cut test done on this, on this, uh, these lots.
Four of them were done.
They're done already?
Yeah.
Oh. Just. Oh, and I told.
Three, yeah, three and four, three of the four passed.
Yeah.
The fourth one probably would have passed if you just moved it over fifty feet, but.
Greg, I did get ahold of Aaron. Um, he's gonna be joining shortly. You should, you should see somebody asking to join the meeting in a minute here.
And it's ready.
Okay.
Anything else I can help from a technical standpoint, looking at the plans in front of you?
Well, one, one question we were just discussing, um. A, now. The owner of the deed is, uh, Lloyd and Mary Martin. Have they transferred deed to what, what was it, what you authorized, um, Lloyd?
To apply for the subdivision, I believe that's what it was. Just to say. Release form.
Or re- release form, but I don't see anything like that in, in these forms that have been submitted.
That would be the Form B application for approval for preliminary plan. Um, just to the town initially to review and determine if a definitive plan and what needs to be submitted with the definitive plan. And the second step, the initial is that on behalf of the landowner, the applicant, Peoples Brook is applying um, to subdivide the land. And the preliminary plan is for the town to review and look at and determine if it meets the subdivision by law. So a definitive plan can be filed with the town as the second step, but the release would be that Form B. Um, which is the quote unquote additional names and signatures, as there is more than one owner listed on the record deed. It's Lloyd and Mary, I believe. And Lloyd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the deed that we found.
You're correct. I still don't see any, same statement, a release of from Lloyd and Mary.
This is preliminary, so that may be. There's additional forms, there's forms A through K. Here's Chris Ryan, listen.
Andrew, is there another form that you would use for that?
This, this ones that we, we would prepare.
Oh.
Yeah, I believe that would come as part of a definitive plan and, uh, correct. The Form B is just the initial submission for the quote unquote preliminary plan. Um, and then the rest of the forms come with a, a bigger package, I, I think is how I would put it. Greg, in terms of, um, you have more, uh, for lack of a better phrase, definition on a definitive subdivision plan than you do with the preliminary. The preliminary just lets the town review what's initially proposed, and then you go to definitive where you start showing contours and all of that fun stuff as well.
Is Chris Ryan, um, on board here or no?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Chris.
Hello.
Chris, we'll, we'll be with you in a second.
Okay.
Andrew, any, any indication how long it's gonna take Blue Wave to come on? Then we'll move on, we'll move on to, to deal with Chris.
Yeah, if you, if you want to do that, Aaron said he would be on in a minute, uh. I guess a minute's a little different for everyone. I apologize, Greg.
Okay, we're gonna move on to look at the other one that.
Okay.
Let us know when, uh, Aaron comes on. He's probably gonna have to wait a little bit. We'll, we'll have, uh, questions.
The Aaron sense. It's like him, okay. Aaron, are you here? Can you hear us? Can you ask me, uh? Aaron, can you hear us?
I can, uh, a little.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Well, now we have Aaron, do we want to go back to this?
Yeah, we're, right. Chris, we're, we're just gonna go back a minute. We just need a, a couple, we, yeah. And then, uh, we'll have these questions answered on the.
We just.
With the, with the Peoples Brook thing. And then we'll. So, uh. The, the first, I guess the, the biggest question right now is. The. You know, maybe, maybe Andrew answered it, but I'd like, I'd like to hear it from you. So in the Form B. The applicant is Peoples Brook LLC. And, um, the owner of the property is still Lloyd and Mary Martin. So, um. What's the procedure from here for, and? Did, uh, Lloyd and Mary? Sign this over to Peoples Brook to deal with her?
Sorry, I'm not following the question. Could you say that again?
So. The applicant on Form B is Peoples Brook LLC. Um, does that, the owners of the property are Lloyd and Mary Martin. Peoples Brook LLC, how does that represent the owners of the property?
The. The applicant of the project and the intended use of the land is Peoples Brook, and we have consent from the owners. Who signed as, as such. For both projects.
So this is preliminary and we need a round table for all the boards to look at the submission. And we'll have further forms for them to fill out. I don't know what else we can do. This is preliminary for perusal at this point.
Yeah.
We'll look at it and get back to.
So a, a motion that would take a look at this and with, um, round table with other boards and see what other requirements are needed and we'll get back to you on that.
Can I ask another question? Aaron's with Blue Wave, right?
Yes, yes.
Aaron, I have a question. Is this residential subdivision being proposed in the event that the solar project is not going through?
No, the subdivision is proposed specifically for the solar project. We, we generally. For both projects, it's the case that we don't want the house to be on the parcel of the solar project, so there there's, uh, desire from the landowners to subdivide.
And, and in the C one O one plans, can you tell me where the solar field would be? I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my brain around it, because this is subdivision all of a sudden. I'm just trying to understand what I'm looking at.
Right. Yeah, the subdivision plans. Andrew or Chris could probably speak or be able to share. On, unless, Andrew.
I'm looking to see if I can share. I don't know if I have the rights. Uh, there it is, your screen. Uh, it just says the host disabled screen sharing.
Yeah.
We're having difficulties with visuals, so we can't see anything. We don't have any video.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're solely audio, but we are looking at the C one O one plan. And my understanding is lots nineteen five and nineteen three. And my understanding is lots nineteen five and nineteen three. Are being proposed for the residential subdivision. Correct?
Andrew, can you speak to that? I'm sorry, I don't have the plans up. I wasn't really prepared.
Yes, cor- correct. Nineteen five and nineteen three are being proposed for the residential. The third lot of the split, as we've mentioned, was the split off for what would be Lloyd's property as is that's already existing.
Understood. So where if this is. In conjunction with the solar field. Where is the solar field going to be? I'm just trying to.
On C. If you go back up to C one oh one, that might be the best way to show it, but.
That's.
Because the. Because you can see where all the. You can see where the houses are and it's the it's everything except for the two parcels that have the houses.
And I apologize. I know you're not looking at the plan and. But I just asked. Basically, what you're telling me is that the other two proposed lots are for solar.
Yeah, and I am I'm looking at the plans now, so I I can.
Point three. But you had just said it was for proposed residential subdivision, so I'm trying to understand.
Right, the subdivision is. It's more of the 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 real estate law side of this. That's what. This is how it has to be drawn. Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong. Per the bylaw, we have to show it in this way so that we. We can do the subdivision. And free zoning. The. The mechanics are not ideal and not really designed for uh. Showing the the solar project.
So it's not showing any solar project on these.
On these plans because these are subdivision plans, but I want to understand and I know what you're saying about. We have to do this legally. I'm trying to understand why the board is looking at a subdivision plan when we have a. Solar project that we are currently involved with.
There might be a there might be a foundational uh. Misunderstanding.
And it and it's probably mine, so please clarify for me.
No, no, it's okay. Yeah, it's okay. The. This application. It does two things. It does divide the lots in a way that. The landowner would like, but it also uh. Filing this app, uh, this preliminary subdivision plan entitles the the. The land, the owner to freeze the zoning in a. In in the current zoning rules. For seven months for for a preliminary uh in which we have time. To update them, update these plans to final. And then it's eight years from that point on. Maybe maybe we were not on the same page about that. I thought that was a. No. So these are written so that we, these are drawn so that we we comply. We will be updating them as we get closer to. Uh, to the to the final plan.
And if the solar project moves forward and is built, then does this plan, is this plan null and void?
No, no, they'll just be updated to match. The exact. Property lines that the. Landowner wants. Um. We would carve for for this project, we would. Have the parcels for the house. Um, and then. I don't know the exact. Configuration for the for the other parcel, but it's something like what's thrown.
Was this lot split, this land split proposed under the solar project as well in the same dimensions? I don't have the plans directly in front of me, so I have to.
I think I understand your question. I think the answer is yes, but to be sure, could you say that again?
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering if this proposed split to break out the the homes is the same. Land proposal that we have on the solar project. I think it is. I'm looking at a smaller version of the solar. So they're breaking those out the same.
Driveway's different.
Well, it's just the driveway. But the actual proposal, breaking out the properties is the same.
Yes.
Uh, maybe it looks like it goes a little farther to the edge, like it looks almost like it splits here. Three hundred feet. Yes, this three here is.
I just don't understand what it is, question.
Well, they're.
Two things from us at the same time.
This is kind of a placeholder. Is how I'm looking at it. So that they can have the property division that Lloyd's looking for. But then the usage of what actually occurs on the external property depends on projects. And if they're able to submit this legally, it. Allows them to submit plans down the road. In the event solar doesn't work out, is my understanding. I might be wrong about that, but. It sets a legal placeholder for them. So they can revisit.
I want. Sorry, I want to jump in. I I want to be, I heard it very clearly last meeting that. You felt like we weren't being. Supportive or communicative or helpful, so I want to be clear. This, this is freezing the zoning. So that we are subjected to the current. Solar bylaw.
Well, your proposal on the solar project was submitted prior to this. The the recommendation of moratorium. My understanding from legal is that that gets you in under the wire, so to speak. So.
Yeah.
Is this just a secondary?
Right. That's right, yes.
Aaron, could you, could you send us an explanation of this in writing? So that we.
Well, essentially what you told us, but so we understand the the legality of it, I guess.
Yes, I can take that.
So we definitely need to talk about this, but I mean, is there, do we have what we need on the preliminary submission as far as just the. Money and whatnot so that we can acknowledge acceptance of this proposal? To start that clock for him. And but also. I don't know that we want to look at this until we have a decision on the the solar. You know what I mean? Like.
I think.
I just feel like we're already stretched so thin on solar that this is.
Other boards and take a look at it. Get um. Documentation of what this is. Clarification on what this is for from Aaron and then we will move forward with it.
I agree.
So we're tabling this.
Yeah, I moved it with table. Any decisions for this meeting and. We'll take it to other boards and wait for other information that we asked for. Uh, before making our decision. In favor? Okay. So. We will. We'll we'll give more information and we'll consider. Thank you, Aaron and Andrew. Okay.
Yeah, of course.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Lloyd, as well.
Watching you guys work it out. It really is.
The setup what we're gonna do?
I think it's called muddled.
Thank you. I'll drop.
Okay, Chris, we're gonna we're gonna take a look at. The uh. Gibbs Gibbs Brook.
Did it do the same thing?
Is it? Under? No. I I was. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, is this done the same way with the same intention? Um, as the Peoples Brook?
Yeah, this is Aaron. I'll I'll jump in and drop. Uh, yes, same same intention and and I. To save your efforts, I. Will say again, this is preliminary and we do have. Seven months to make them final. The intention. Is that these will change, so if you're. If you're trying to save yourself cycles. There's. There isn't. Much value in putting. Putting a ton of time into reviewing these. We will be updating them as as our projects move forward.
It's made out. I'm looking at the the Form B now, Chris and and Aaron. It's. Made up the same way as the other project. So.
Right.
I think we need to do the same thing. So send. Aaron, and if you would, send us the same information. If we have any other questions. I'll get in touch with you right away. So you can address those too, as we move along with this, but. If you could, please send the same information. As we asked for.
Designing the law.
And the property. I I I appreciate that. We're gonna take a quick look at this because we have any questions uh right now. So, hold on, hold on, I'll go away.
Aaron, on this lot twelve is just defining the property for the homeowner. Is that correct? Or is?
Let me get those plans up. Chris, I'm not sure if you have them.
The original, the existing lot, existing property is known as Lot Twelve. We just.
And then you broke the one, two, and three, right?
Yeah, correct. Lot one has the existing uh home on it.
Thirty two acres and solar. There's dwelling and dwelling here, so they're keeping those at. Breaking out solar.
Yeah, we usually only do it in frontage.
Okay, so there's only currently one dwelling on the property. But you're looking to subdivide to three with two proposed dwellings for Lot Two and Three?
Uh, correct. There's one dwelling, there's a barn, just another couple of small outbuildings.
Now for the subdivision, are they on maintained roads or are they putting a road?
There's a proposed thief. Looked what well. Is that similar to the? Cul-de-sac looking one on eighty nine Chester?
Uh, I. I I'm not sure. I don't really know the Chester wins. What are you asking again exactly?
Well, we see this. It looks almost like a cul-de-sac between the proposed property division.
Yes.
Is that going to be a road?
That would, as proposed, would be a pay of cul-de-sac, yes.
So they're building. And we're we're pursuing that would be maintained, correct?
Um, I would believe so, yes. It could be a homeowners association. Whatever town and would like to.
No, not at all.
We're we're gonna, we're gonna do the same with this as we did with the other plan. This one seems like it, we need other. Uh, boards and committees, possibly Highway Department involved in this. So.
Okay.
Health, you know. Other boards in town. So, um. I move, will we? Table this one for now, uh, get together with other departments. And wait for information. From Aaron, we asked for. If we have any other questions, I'll email them to you. And we'll see if we keep this to move along, but um.
My second.
Okay. Favor? Okay.
Could I ask one thing? When you make these submissions. We don't have it on our forms, but because of this uh. The 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 girth of this. Could you make the five sets of anything that you send in the eleven by seventeen format? So that's an emergency. So that people can, um, our board members can look at them.
Oh, sure. Uh, it's just, we only just submitted what the regulations said needed or required, so, but yeah, we have anything to do with those.
Really difficult for us to. All get around the map. If we could.
I I I understand.
Anthony, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess seven means. We deal with this. We need to find out when the clock starts.
Well, I think that's why it's important the date that we accept it, and I'm glad that you prevented me from going further with that suggestion, because we're not ready. And with the next six months focusing on the bylaws and moratorium, I just. This is like a one-two punch.
Yeah, and it's gonna, it's gonna involve. This is so.
They wanted to get this under the wire.
Yes. Understood and and.
But it's not accepted is. Complete.
No.
So we don't have to.
Also on, yes, but.
I I I really feel like this was a blind side that it's, yeah. It's putting all the guns to uh push of contingencies. I I I really feel like. We we could have had some verbal discussions given to us as to where they were going. This is. This is. They fool around.
No. I mean, even Lloyd didn't know what was going on. This was kind of a legal thing. Yeah, he tried to keep them in the game.
Like I had a difficult time getting that in.
For sure, for sure.
You know what? And your question was right in line with.
Well.
They give us these plans. There's no solar on these plans. Where is the solar coming?
I'm not an engineer, so I'm looking at a plan and I'm trying to understand what I'm looking at. That's all. I'm not. Not trying to sabotage anyone or get you in a gotcha moment. I need to understand as a board member. What I'm looking at. And. I just. Simple, simple questions, that's all.
Did the lots like ever been gone through for Martin's property? We go for a solar project?
I don't believe so, no.
No, that was what, that was one of the questions that.
That was one of our initial questions to hear.
They they did this instead of.
Right. Because it's buy some more time, I think.
So we got, we're gonna have to work this for legal and have Christine present to legal find out.
Well, I think it's good that we're gonna obtain information from Blue Wave and we can kind of like, we just discussed table these two for a moment, you know? And then we have to. And then we have to focus, focus. On the solars, we have to, we have to get our decisions done, we have to get our conditioning done, and get ready for that. But. Again, I wanna know. If the subdivision on eighty-nine. Stops that proposal. Cause if it's stipulated on a land split. Break out the, the residence. How can we move forward on a proposed project for solar if we don't have? A, B, and C done?
But in any big project, you got contingency plans. And they wanna get them in so that we have a bigger.
Well, I get that, I get that part, I'm, I'm kinda shifting gears, I guess, a little bit to go back to. The proposed solar project that we're facing, if there's not already a land split, a lot split. To break out the residences, how can we accept a plan of, of the blueprint plan? That breaks out the residents? That has to be done first, we can't. Are they gonna just submit new plans now, I mean, like?
But it's being leased, it's not being split. The, the solar is only gonna go on the leased property, which is outlined.
Right, but I thought part of their initial solar proposal. Was that? Lloyd's property would be. Set aside.
And it is in the, in the um.
His residence property.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's also aside.
What is? Hasn't been.
No.
It hasn't been, does it, it hasn't.
It's still part of that agricultural.
But the, the solar field. Is on his leased property, which does not have to change ownership.
Right, right.
So there doesn't have to be any lot split, he's got the designated lines for the solar. Um, which is on his property. So it would be like anything else, if you're leasing a section. For grazing or farmland or whatever, you would have your borders for it.
But there doesn't have to be an approval of the. Designation? To separate the two?
When we do the solar project, the solar part is on however many acres. And it's delineated, so. That's it.
That's the part I'm missing.
I'm seeing it entirely, because when you ask pointedly, where is the solar, where, I, I never, I definitively, I don't know where the solar is now.
This, this plan that we're looking at here is the same map. It's a different map of the same project, it's just assigning different responsibilities to the property. So in the initial eighty-nine Chester, whatever it is, People's Brook that we have for the solar. It says, here's land for residents, here's land for residents, and all of this will be solar. The one we're just getting is here's residents, here's residents, now it's proposed residential subdivision. So they're, they're applying a secondary. Purpose to the same land tract as a contingency plan. So we won't see solar on the subdivision plan, and we won't see subdivision on the solar plan. But I guess what I'm questioning.
So, under sixty-one A in this whole agri. Uh, bylaws. The. Because the house is part of the agricultural land, it doesn't have to split from that. It's considered all. Whole as the agricultural land.
Okay.
Permitting the solar to go on.
That makes sense to me.
So. But what I wonder is, if. And this is where we need some legal advice on this, if we were to approve this. Or. That other. Solar project was approved, would that change that other solar project? So we would have to use this. And re. Design that whole solar thing.
He's only submitting this as a contingency.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's a bad.
Yeah, that it's approved, if he's not gonna do anything in the subdivision lands unless the solar is approved.
So he's just got plan A and plan B, in case he plan A falls through.
Wrong, no, I don't think he's gonna subdivide it anyway.
I don't think plan B is viable or in his, what he wants, so therefore, I think he's just. It's something to get. A, I, I think legally, we really have to.
Get a foot in the door.
Yeah, because we're, we're getting a, a real legal flipper out here.
Yeah.
I feel.
Yeah, Aaron couldn't even really.
No.
Answer quickly, no.
I feel like they're outsmarting us and we, we need to know what's going on, and I, I, I don't do conspiracy things, but this just seems so. Doesn't make any sense to me. This, plan B's never gonna go into effect.
Well, if. If it's approved, then this goes through hard.
Let's, let's start with just like, let's move on.
Well, I mean, they're not gonna put. A subdivision on solar field. So if the solar field goes through it, no one avoids the subdivision, doesn't it? I think the subdivision was just submitted as a, as a legal foot in the door.
Yeah. It, it, it's like you call it a placeholder, it's a placeholder.
Because, because we don't have a moratorium, wasn't a moratorium on subdivision. Or on solar. This was in a different direction, right? So, we. Maybe what he's saying is we have seven months to move on this.
Yeah, because he didn't mention specifically the subdivision by law.
Yeah.
The thing he kinda snuck through is the five poles. That go on along that new road.
Yeah.
There's five poles. For Eversource.
So Eversource is backing this project.
So those five poles, I think. Are key.
So we need legal to review this for sure, right?
Yeah, now those five poles. I'm like, why does he need five poles, why does he need five poles?
Well, to distribute, if there were actually a subdivision put in, you would need it to distribute the power throughout the property, but.
For three houses?
No, the three houses, the, the two that are there are just being. Hell, they plan on, if, if this subdivision is really gonna go through. I think there's more than three houses to be proposed there, there's lots of large area.
But the, the, I think it's gotta have frontage or road, yeah.
Well, not if he does a cul-de-sac.
And both projects propose a cul-de-sac.
And the profit, you know, you still need the road definitions would still require the same frontage, but uh.
I'm not wanting to look at that plan again, but I'm pretty sure the cul-de-sacs were made just right.
Yeah, I'm sure they were. But you're bringing in the extra poles, which they don't have on Chester Road. That's uh.
And do we even know, remember we went through that whole thing when they added the solar field and they had to upgrade the lines and all that, like they're gonna have to do all that?
And I wanna know how big those poles are.
Yeah.
They'll blend in with the Maples.
There's a whole, there's a whole lot to, to digest on that.
So, where should we go?
Are you talking to the planning board? I, I'm sitting here, listening to this, and it's like, this is so confusing, it's something is going on.
Something smells.
Okay.
Right, so. Good, good.
We, we gotta know this part, we need to go on to.
Decision process for projects.
Let's, let's move on to uh, our decision-making process for. People's Brook. Oh, see, that's the one that's. Coming up first. Yeah, I think. We need to move. Start.
And we're talking solar again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, because we're.
Losing my mind.
If, if the scenario worked out that moratorium didn't, if we get it, don't get it voted in. And there is no moratorium, we're still under the gun to have a decision by November twenty-fifth.
Understood, yeah.
So I believe we can get it to.
Track our decision with our conditions and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Um, I think I emailed everyone.
The worksheet.
Well, the worksheet. Then, I, just forgive me, I haven't put anything on that worksheet yet, I've been studying all this, all this stuff, but I think, I got something. Uh, the decision that was made on the same property back in nineteen, in the decision process. And, you know, what the conditions were.
Rolling potato one?
Yeah, rolling potato.
How different was that application to this one? You guys are.
I wish I could answer you off the top of my head. I wish I could answer you right off the top of my head, I. It was kinda like when it didn't go through. My mind let it go, so I, I would have to look at the plan.
It's that rolling potato was Eversource.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't want it.
Yeah, but I mean, the decision for the planning board, you know, they all approved it. You know what I mean, so I was wondering how much different. That plan back then, it, it is from this plan here.
Can we utilize that decision kind of made?
We, we probably have a plan hanging in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure we do.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it's stalled out. And it ran over its uh, limit.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, ran, huh?
Was rolling potato the same situation, or did we?
Yeah.
Same process.
So they just ran out?
They ran out because Eversource wasn't, wasn't well willing to connect. They had done the carfa and they said they couldn't take it into grid.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um.
For that, for that.
So after so long.
It was a resubmission.
Yeah, twenty nineteen, yes.
He was gonna be able to resubmit.
Yeah, but I don't think it was the same.
Right.
You know, I don't know, I could watch the proposal was for. You know what I mean, because why is it that it was gonna be on the backside of the field, lower ground, nobody ever see it. But I don't know.
Right. Which uh.
What if, I mean, Sean did it all, rolled the two.
Yeah.
But we had six applications at the time, I think he would have been some or seven.
Correct.
Eversource did not have the capacity to would have connected. And it wasn't, there wasn't enough there for them to consider.
Yeah, see, I think it was a smaller field.
Yeah.
They got that big one, right, across this. So they must have upgraded, Eversource was upgraded at some point.
That was the only one that they were considering, but because there's no storage, it goes right into the, into the grid. And you would have had to have a bigger storage. Who would have had a best effectively?
Right.
To get, cause they can't let it all in.
Oh, oh.
Because only so much can go, they be brought in without storing it until it can be brought in. That's why the best thing up here, they need to outplan it, so that at night, they can let the power go into the grid.
On batteries.
So we have until November, what?
Twenty, uh, twenty-fifth, but we have to get it. Written up to.
Right, I'm just trying to get an understanding of my.
I talked to Aiden yesterday, he couldn't come to the meeting today, and I said, fine, then we get it. If he comes, we gotta pay him, first of all.
Yeah.
And if we're not moving, you don't want him sitting here through all the rest of the crap. But he couldn't make it anyways, he said he could come probably at noon, it's okay. I thought, if we keep coming up with conditions. We write the list of the conditions. He can, he can help us to write it. Is that how the process went last time?
Yeah, pretty much.
We also have our peer reviewers, too, that can assist with that process, so. I can't remember what his name is.
Connor.
We can. In the minutes from. I don't remember. It was a hearing. Blue Wave kept asking for peer reveal, and I don't know if they got it.
They, they have.
They did?
Yeah, they had, they had, they have everything that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Even had a small one, that we, we had asked some questions at a. At a, at a meeting, um. It was our last daytime meeting, and we asked Connor about decommissioning. And, and he told us he was a stormwater guy, decommissioning and something else. And I got that forwarded to Andrew, that's all taken care of, you responded to that. I'm still not satisfied with the decommissionings. Connor said he was a stormwater engineer. What he knows about decommissioning and lots of decommissioning, because. To me, just. That, you know, it just doesn't seem to. Sit right in my mind.
Right.
Right, but I do think. When it comes to that. That's, that's a, that's a money issue, maybe the select board should be dealing with.
Was always involved in.
Not us. I mean, we can to a certain degree, but one thing that's in our bylaws, and I haven't seen any other bylaws. In the state, and I checked out. God, I don't know, I can't tell you how many towns, and I printed a lot of them out, so, and start highlighting stuff. But we have in our bylaws. That's based on prevailing wages, the decommissioning. Which, which I really like, so I looked up prevailing wage just for a. Common laborer, prevailing wage right now is almost sixty-five dollars an hour.
Right.
So I figured out. What I thought. Reasonably would take for time to decommission that all the way, but now you're talking truck drivers, you're talking loading, you're talking unload, and all that kinda stuff. Um, and I think they're way under. But I think. I think I need to talk to the select board about getting someone that can give them a better estimate.
Right.
On that.
Right.
Than a. A civil engineer. Where do they know about wages and. Estimating. Construction projects. Basically, decommissions construction project, you gotta go out there with tools.
Same time, same building.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, opposite, backwards.
It is.
You have the um, Sincar, or, maybe I have the Sincar book.
Decision.
Uh, decision. And it would reference in that who we hired for the decommission figures. But I know the select board goes through all that bonding process. And they, they um. Agree on the. And that's part of our. Our job and the decision. To determine who, who makes. Got a whole fuck bunch of things going. What the, what the uh, regu- regulations say, we can't go above certain amounts of state.
Hundred and twenty-five percent.
Now let's go one hundred and twenty-two.
Go one twenty-four point five.
I'm in the math.
Point nine. Or not just go to one twenty-five, you can't go above it.
I can go above it, that's correct.
Can't go above one twenty-five. But, you know, even reasonably, that decommissioning costs is. But that's, there, there's a lot of stuff that. This whole process, I know this is kinda getting off subject, but this whole process, there should be other boards involved.
Yeah.
Should be the highway department involved, when you see stuff like cul-de-sac. A right away, now, is the town gonna be responsible for that?
Well, the subdivision. For our boards is totally different, working on subdivision, you do have to include. The highway department, you have to, the building inspector, you have to include electrical, you have to include fire. Police, health. But those all, yeah, those all have to be included. We, and that's why we send out these plans to everybody, to all the different departments. So that they can see it, and we also publish it online, for some on. So that everybody can look at it and they get their feedback, and there'll be many, many meetings. Uh, there'll be. I hope there'll be roundtable meetings.
Well.
At least joint meetings. And um, we do have. Finally, um, health department bylaws, water department bylaws, that we, you know, can. Finally, um, health department bylaws, water department bylaws, that we, you know, can. Incorporate, we didn't have that before, so that's helpful, I think.
I do too. We also finally got. I went to a meeting, well, was it, Kareem was there. Uh, a week and a half, a week ago, whatever, and the fire chief showed up. And I, that's the first time I sat.
Well, he was at one of the meetings, he was very, very well versed in.
It was nice. To hear, yeah, and he was, and Adam's a pretty smart guy, but it was good to see him finally get involved on a larger level. I think that's, that's huge. Especially at best. Solar, not so much, but, but you know, so another thing I thought about.
Yeah, solar is just a gateway to best.
Yeah, if you bring it to solar, you gotta have.
Thing under conditions, and I suppose we gotta talk, this, this is why I think it's important to have other. People, boards, officials in town involved, because even, even this solar project at Peoples Brook, if there was a fire in that forest. Out back of this. How could, how could the fire crew get through that solar field and out there to put that out?
They're not.
No, that's.
They're not real bad.
It is, it is a bad project.
The road has to, the Huntington Road has to be redone, up until the place will.
I'm talking about even Peoples Brook, out back the lines.
Yeah, cause that's a state force.
State force on the other side.
No, state force was behind him.
Right.
Oh, it does?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah.
But there's, so there would be basically no access.
Correct, and it'd be a huge, with there's some fire in the middle of the woods.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but under conditions, right now, they could go through the field.
No.
No. Fire department, they have to.
I don't think so, is there an access route?
Is there an access route up to the towers?
Yeah, there is.
Part of the way, yeah.
There is.
Yeah.
So they get that.
Yeah, no. That access to the towers was built when, how is it, dude?
Yeah.
And the trucks get through and.
Being in such a forested town. Plans not owned by Springfield Water.
But that's the condition that we should, we, we should be asking the fire department.
That's, that was my point, that we should be. Asking fire department, you know, if in case of a emergency or a fire back there.
You got that, no? I don't need to duplicate efforts, right?
I do.
Also, also great, um. You think of uh, Springfield's. Mission is all of these rest loss and maintaining the quality of all those rest loss. Is there a way that we can enlist some of their support um, to get them nervous about some of these bests? Uh, or is that uh, not a route?
Well.
That's a fully full.
It's been an attempted route.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jackie wrote a.
Jackie wrote a letter, and there's been absolutely no response, they've been really, really quiet, and don't understand why.
She wrote the letter.
Big utilities and big utilities.
The top people, even copied all the newspaper, everybody on, no.
I, I had suggested at another meeting that. Get it in a newspaper, the people in Springfield, Naglom and Long Meadow.
They've been in it.
They're the ones that drink the water.
Yeah.
Maybe it would cause an uproar.
No, it's been in Springfield paper.
But it still doesn't cause an uproar.
But they don't want another power plant in Springfield either, so.
Their NIMBYs, not my backyard.
Long Meadow doesn't want one, I think it doesn't want one of them.
They're like here, Hilltowns.
They're out, they're out, I, and when I went to that meeting, there were a training session. Um, Deerfield said that they would love to have uh, solar, and they would love to have. Um. Uh, best, best, oh my god.
Deerfield does?
Deerfield, the Deerfield planters, yep, and we're just so excited, oh, you get so much revenue from that, I love it. Yeah, what cost?
Well, that's the whole, whole kinda what we're trying to do is manage it so the town can still get revenue. But not, not the way it's being done, I mean, stuck.
Has, they has some good stuff like that, they, they've got an aquifer uh, overlay. Where they can't be touched, they got all kinds of designated areas where, you know, they got the industrial, they got the commercial, but they also have. Solar designated is probably not. Um, I, I just printed out their stuff and.
I, I did too, I think, there was a couple of the towns, where maybe?
Hadley's agricultural, so I wanted to do.
Yeah. That's what we're gonna end up having to do is get. A zoning overlay. For specific areas or solar.
So that, so that all the agricultural isn't, isn't available, if, if there's, you know. The water feed in and.
We had looked into that a long time ago, three chairmen's ago. And there were limited areas that were able to be utilized based upon size. And protection and Springfield water. And I think that they have. Targeted every one of the available properties.
Really?
In the last five to seven years.
Some, some towns have like a twenty acre.
Size limit.
Yeah, size limit. I don't think ours, I don't think we have anything.
I want a twelve acres is ringing a bell to me, but I don't.
It's a minimum.
Minimum.
Minimum of the twelve acres. That's why Hobson. Would that twelve acre piece?
Where? Who, who?
Hobson, remember the log split?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Until we get a proposal.
Yeah, you know, you never know.
All right, um. Eleven forty-two, I just wanna. Let you know.
Yeah, okay, let's just.
I'm, I mean, I've got like forty-five minutes, I just wanted.
You know, if we were talking about um. Uh, in line with conditions, um. The zone. You know, for them to stay in compliance with the sixty-one A. They gotta report their yield to the state every year. Okay, there's a form they gotta submit. And um, we required them to.
Copy of?
Notify us, yeah.
It's just a copy of the form, they're already competing, I don't see why not.
But I mean, it would be sent to the zo- you know, the zoning board, so.
So that would be an assessor.
Or assessor, whatever, so they know they stay in compliance.
Yeah.
Assessor could write the conditions.
Actually, the, the.
Well.
The, the pilot and the, and the taxes should be based on.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it based on a percentage of. Seeing for output profits. Right?
Right.
I.
The state's got that wrapped up.
I know.
You know.
Another town had, in, in the bylaws that they needed. I'm not saying it was, I got.
I don't really know any debt, yeah. You know, you know, another thing I, I, you know, like, I. You know, when this whole thing started, you're back in two nineteen, in backside might, I'm going. All the people in vegetation towns, I was always worried about chemicals and everything, right? You know, cause you're hearing what happened to the aquifer in Westfield. Okay, and um, you know, then they said, okay, they're gonna mow, they're not gonna use chemicals. But then I seen in the proposal for Huntington Road. They have an option to use chemicals.
Yeah.
Okay, they didn't on Martin, but they did on Huntington Road, but I also watched what they're doing across street from Martin, that big hole revealed. And. It wouldn't surprise me if they're using chemicals there. Because they don't spend a lot of time mowing.
Yeah, there's nothing to mow.
No, I think, I'm thinking, I'm thinking they're using chemicals, but I don't know. But I mean, I don't know if they're, like the health party.
And she's for Sincar folks. That was. That was the one that, that could. Uh, hazard, this, I have to pull that up. Um, the one that's across from.
Yeah.
I would play statewide, get used to, that too, but, but those.
And they had to have the fence aside, you have the. The animal, small animal.
Yeah, we're going underneath, yeah.
Um, but I was pretty sure they said they couldn't uh. I know that it was written.
Yeah, I, I heard they weren't supposed to be using chemicals, but I don't know, who's policing, you know?
One of the big problems we have. Um, so.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah. It could, it could be us. Um, well, I read, but.
Do you have any?
Yeah.
We have time for that.
Unless it becomes your whole time job.
I, I drive by, I don't know how many times a day, at least, at least twice every day, cause like, even if I go to. To town once, the uh, bell floor, and it looks like crap out in front there.
Yeah.
And there, you know, and I, and I think that this is where screening comes into play. As I, 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 you know, at some point we'll be slowed down, like a look at their conditions.
We have to go over there and do a site visit, cause they still haven't done their, their building, I don't think they've done their concrete pad, which was supposed to have been done.
I know.
So.
By December this year, right?
Right, in a month.
Did I see something that they were applying to subdivide to? Drop off of the backside of a chunk of land? I think that was.
Day was time with us.
There was a, there was an announcement in the paper two weeks ago, I think, it was a fairly substantial lot, I was wondering. Would that get down to the ever source best area, is, is that part parcel or not?
That curve.
Answered, yeah.
I don't know.
Is that the one that they were talking about for doing the fire department?
No, that's right, of that, some, yeah, that cemetery. There, by the highway department. That's the floor onto some land right there. And now. Gonna talk about assessing that land, doing a feasibility study for fire. I got, I have theories on that.
You know.
Once a feasibility study comes through, and they say, oh, this is a good place to have it, you're gonna watch the price of the land, sky, right?
Do it, God save Tommy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sure.
I know.
More conditions of fire.
I suggested.
All right, so is that conditions for sixty-one A? The fire department, are we doing water? How are we doing uh, for fire, or if there's a fire, what's the water pressure, what's the?
In Peoples Brook.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be.
Do we need hydrants there, do we need? They don't work, but. No pressure.
There are water towers right there.
There's no water source there, is there? There's no water source.
There's a water tower, right on uh, Justin Roy.
Oh, right, I mean, it's.
Those for pressure.
So we don't need to.
So that could be a condition.
Well. Does the line go all the way there?
I don't know.
No, it stops up near that water tower somewhere.
Yeah. And we'll make them drag a line in.
Then it heads towards town.
Yeah.
Right out of town. I thought, another, another thing as far as the uh. Visual mitigation there. Higher. Staggered, you had put in there staggered, bigger too, three foot. Now.
We need, we need full, whatever it is needs to be full, because they wanted to do it twelve feet apart, so we need a landscape. They were supposed to send over, or we were supposed to work with a landscape that, that they were recommending. And I don't know that they ever gave us some name of it when we did the site visit. Um, he said that they had a landscaper, and that was, we need a landscaper plan, which we do not have yet.
Who said that, Blue Wave?
Yeah.
We can't even, there's such conflict of interest.
Yeah, but they have to put in the trees.
Oh, yeah.
It's there, it's not part of them, but they have a landscaper that they're gonna pay to put in the trees.
To, to read, if. As, as a peer review, get a landscape architect to go and take a look at that.
We could, we're gonna pay for it, but if, if we work with a landscaper, they would do the same thing.
Paying out their money.
Yes.
How about if, it, the only should be on them to provide something, we've already talked about the, the introducing other bodies that are not indigenous planting. I think that we need to say. We've asked you, we're, we're not going to do it, you need to present to us what, what the alternative plantings are, and how are we gonna mitigate those sight lines? Uh, I think that's really kind of they.
They, their response has been the same all the time, everybody's. Uh.
No, they said that we could pick whatever we wanted.
Right.
And to work with the landscapers.
Say that, that is not acceptable, the bylaws talk about indigenous native plantings, so therefore, I think it should be on them to come back with a. A proposal, that we, we should spend our time or money on.
Our bodies are not.
Right, they are.
Here?
Mm-hmm. They're, they're, they're indigenous here.
Says who?
Uh, I, I.
Say your source.
I didn't think so either. They are.
They are.
They are. Yep, they're a type of cedar, and they were, they're indigenous here.
Very good.
And they're fast growing. And they're pretty tough.
So we've got two proposals, one is to work with. To get the referral to their landscaper. Um. To get them to propose, give us some landscape going on with what we want, cause they said we could choose whatever we wanted. Or have a peer review or do it. So those, there's two plans, right, for that.
Although it is considered endangered in the state due to its limited habitat.
I don't hate this stuff from another town where they. Called for a staggered buffer zone with minimum of, of six little trees. And, and it passed.
It depends on what, what the length of the property is, and what the depth is that you're gonna plant, so that you can stagger them, and how big the circumference is for the plants. Um, but. We've only got a hundred feet that they're willing to correct for now, that they're willing to plant anything. A hundred feet from pole, from one pole to the other, isn't gonna give us much of a screen, and.
How do they justify it?
I'm just telling you what they said, so that's what we're dealing with right now, so we could. It's another condition we could look at. Because uh, but a hundred feet, and they were gonna space them twelve feet apart, that everybody, I mean, you might as well just forget it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
This is the plan. So. I, I drove by this morning. Because I, I had an idea that. Where they're, where they're doing their plantings, it, it's not gonna screen everything.
Not gonna screen anything, sorry.
No, it's not gonna.
Cause it, it'll take twenty years for them to get that, huh, right?
Right.
If they grow. Salt is gonna.
At the, at the top of that land, at the top of that field, that's ten feet higher than the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And then it would be up another fifteen feet, that's twenty-five feet higher than the road, right? That's, that's taller than most houses in town. Most houses are about twenty feet. Eighteen, twenty feet. Um.
So could they put a berm?
Well, that's.
Plant on top of that?
That would be much better.
They, they could do that, and other towns have done that, I don't know what they did or all the stuff that.
No, Hampton did that.
Honest.
Southampton did that, or was it Westfield, right along twenty there.
Westfield, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's not bad.
They keep it nice and bowed, clean, it's really nice.
But the berm helps a lot, because it takes away the visual.
But the berm helps a lot, because it takes away the visual.
It does. It does, it takes away the visual, it gives, it catches the, and plantings on top of it. Then it would really, really do something, but also I thought. That road going in, along the side of that road, you know, the access road there, it should do that too, because that's gonna create an opening. Where you can see right through in either, from either direction.
They're not gonna want, and I'm playing devil's advocate here.
Yeah.
Because we've seen worktricks and carvadas. Um, they're not gonna want trees around little power lines. Anything to do with. Uh, blocking that.
How close, you don't have to be close to the power line, no, if you don't, yes.
In in Aberby days, don't grow up and have big sprawling, spread out branches either. They kinda grow up tall. Kniffers tree. They all, I mean, any kind of pine trees, except for the white pines, they go tall and fall over. And they, they grow fast, but. They're very useless. I just wanted to. Look at where that road went in. But I. I I was thinking about this. A lot, and I thought. Does it show their plantings? No, this isn't very good. But there. You get. You got a big void right through here. That looks right up there.
Yeah.
So. You know. And.
Where's his room for subdivision though? Where's his road for the subdivision though?
That's going over further. But. I don't see why we can't put in conditions. A. Even on the other side of these lines. Up, up this road, so blocking visual coming in. At an angle. Not so much on this side. Because. But still, even in back of these houses, if if. If we don't do something, I'm I'm just saying, if we don't do something in back of these houses. And. Lloyd or whoever decides to cut down the existing trees that are back of the houses now. We don't have any. We don't have a buffers on there.
They're not gonna want trees that. I think. For the solar, they needed. Hundred foot because of the shadow of the trees. Pass them a shadow on their their solar.
Oh, they got a hundred feet. In back of these houses, from the back lot of. Eighty seven and eighty nine, they got the hundred foot buffer zone. They could put them right on the, on the line there. They got a hundred and sixteen feet to the solar array. At the, at in. Hundred and one feet at another one. I mean. Just a thought for condition.
You know, remember, I I I sent you the pictures in Southwick. Craftery from the ranch.
Yeah.
Know what I mean? And those are planted this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and the housing development is right behind there. You know? You know.
Yeah. And those, those are evergreens, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
And you want evergreens.
Yeah, you know. They like put on.
Zigzag almost.
They jagged them. Know what I mean?
Yeah, like, yeah, like that, so you got one here. And like those on top of a berm, berms are expensive.
If we, we don't have any.
We have twenty five feet to compensate. Give me a ten foot berm with. Arbor by, so that's the way we're gonna go.
Yeah. We have nothing to lose by putting conditions.
Correct.
I I agree wholeheartedly.
Think. But I think that's and praise.
Right.
Yeah. So. Cause I, I just looked at those trees this morning, I said, but I can see right through there. You think bigger trees?
They didn't, uh, when he, when he was talking, I didn't hear anything about on the. Towards the Chester end. Putting any plantings.
Yes, definitely, you know, this makes it look like, but right now. He's got a tree barrier here by his house, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so. You you know, he only comes so far. With this, with the screening, so that's why it opened back. In that way.
Yeah, so. If.
But we can't put. Who owns that property?
The tree lives.
Yeah.
The house he lives in.
Where's the other house?
Boyd owns that too, he rents it.
Yeah.
So even if we couldn't do it in front of the house. I couldn't, on the least part of it, it's got a hundred. A hundred feet here in that buffer zone.
Yeah.
Plantings here.
He can screen it.
I'd say plantings all along here. The whole, the whole perimeter.
They'll, they'll, that that's gonna be a maze, major pullback, but. Well, there's no problem with. Putting it in there.
We are more worried about our residents than we are about Blue Wave's concern for what we propose for conditions.
Talk about money for them.
I understand that. I understand.
I agree with the berm, I agree with the staggered plant.
That doesn't have any trouble spending money on that.
Right.
No.
I can't even believe, I can't even believe that they're doing it for the owner, the landlord.
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't cheap.
Yeah. We got one of those printers down there in the. Town clerk's office. Yeah, well, actually, we got one in the water department too. He bought it. You know how much I used to pay for making maps for?
Oh, I used to pay big bucks, I had to go to Southwest and Southwest and get plans made up.
Yeah, well, I was in the old days. So and so on our conditions, we're gonna put for, are we going to? Talk to their landscaper, or are we going to? Hire someone?
How, how do we get an accountant who we have left on that account? Or give a period?
Well, I don't know that we've uh, we've paid off everything yet, so. Has uh, um. Have they submitted, submitted the bills and have you? Submitted that for payment?
I haven't seen any.
Like buried in there somewhere.
Where, there?
Well, they just keep dumping stuff on our desk and I haven't been able to get in.
I I asked them to put it in our mailbox, I haven't seen anything.
Yeah.
I don't know.
They usually send them pretty close.
The reason I ask that, I I don't really wanna. I I I don't trust anybody Blue Wave's gonna hire, or they're that knows or a referral from them. These are all people in their pocket.
Yeah, but I think. We're gonna need them.
Us having to get involved in that kind of minutia level is. Just gonna wear us thin.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, they gotta take care of it.
We're in the conditions.
Yeah.
And and we can.
Review those.
Yeah, I mean, like. You, you have to submit your screening plan to us, we're not just gonna. Stay okay to whatever you propose.
Put them to task.
Right.
But, you know, they need to give us the name of the. Landscaper and the landscaper before. The twenty fifth has to come up with the plan, and we need to negotiate it and put it in the condition.
Well, that's. Yeah, that's why I'm so frustrated that we spent thirty some odd minutes on those subdivision plans. But I'm not at all surprised that we did.
There was a re- a reason I wanted to get that out of the way too. I felt enormous pressure, I was really pissed at that last meeting. That they pulled that crap. And I kinda talked to a hallway before the meeting. And now. Then I had to count out.
Their, their goal is. To generate revenue period. That is the only fault for them. How they do that is. Neither here nor there, in their opinion.
I'll think of berm these guys want.
Ten foot.
Oh, for plantings?
Yeah.
You know, like they're in Southwick. They didn't use, you know, it it might have gone up. Twenty four inches mounting in the. Trees on top of it.
But but. We've got raised solar and a raised topography. So we need to.
Trees.
Or the end bigger trees. A berm.
Okay.
The berm would immediately take your eye, sort of visual effect, especially. Planted berm.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Ten feet.
Is that too much? Is that gonna be?
That's big.
Too much where the berm is visual attraction, you're like, ew, berm. You know, like. Berm better where then the plantings can take the visual.
Might be a problem with drainage, cause they're.
I mean, make it work, you want it to work, make it work, you know?
Just make the drainage on the inside of it so it goes down.
Right.
Into the drainage, wrong, through the same pipe. It's gonna drain in the same spot.
I think we, we hit him for ten feet and if it's a, if it's a gradual. Thing and it flattens out and it's fairly wide. We can have our staggered planting on that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be a berm, it could be.
Mm-hmm, okay, so with the ten.
Yeah, let's go with ten.
And what kind of trees are we looking at, are we still gonna go with?
I mean, evergreens would be great.
Evergreen.
Are they gonna consider everybody's evergreens?
No, they are.
Yeah.
Well, they said that, they said we didn't have to do.
White pines. They get pretty.
With the coniferous trees lately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ashes are all dead. Stuff is getting hit with blight and and disease. Right, so maybe we should just stick with the evergreens.
Someone sent me a real nice picture of a screen, I was trying to find it, it was of the pines and what they did is completely blocked it out. But um, they also had, had them required to do maintenance to kinda keep them. Keep them nice also, but the screening was amazing, I wish I could find a picture of it, but it was white pines.
How old was the growth though?
Uh, they were very, very fast growing.
White pines are fast.
Yeah, it was just a couple of years. But they also. Took care.
Chasing our tail on the enforcement issue again too.
And then it's, you know, it's green.
Yeah, I like the idea of. Time.
Or, yeah.
Different, different possibilities, that's all, if you look at what he's. Martin's got around his house right now on the north side.
Yeah.
Okay, he he planted that stuff, I don't know when or where, right, but I mean, um.
Those are some healthy looking hammocks.
Yeah, and they, and they, and they screened. That side of the south real good.
They do. They do. Make sure evergreens.
Yeah. And and a a ma- making its program or.
Yeah.
How it gonna be, because if you do. Yeah, don't plant trees and let them die and go, oh, well, they died, you know, like. And if you wanna make a real screening, you top them frequently. Right, top, so they grow out. Yeah.
Right, yeah. Replacement like in thirty days instead of a hundred fifty or whatever.
Can we, can we go so far as to have a independent landscaper?
Horticulturist, whatever, yeah.
For the uh, for the duration of the contract. To the maintenance.
We could have.
Did I see that like? Did I see that in the two thousand nineteen conditions?
Think so.
But they didn't. Do it.
Yeah, but I mean.
But that's good. Was. Well, we, we could say.
So refer to that condition for the life.
But I saw another one where it was, if it changed owners, it went. For the life of the.
Responsibility transfer.
But it's gotta be. You, you know, the new owner's gotta take responsibility. Know what I mean, it's all gonna be transferred to him, all conditions.
Yeah.
You know, and and the other thing we talked about in last meeting was. In the lease where releases Lloyd from any responsibility whatsoever, I think that's. Wrong, I don't know, I don't know if we can. Get into that lease or.
Legally, what? It, what, who has the encumbrance, because if we could put some encumbrance with Lloyd, I think that would be beneficial for the town and. Might make it less attractive.
Yeah.
He's bringing them in, let him take some responsibility.
Sure.
I agree.
So would that be something to bounce off of, just you know, regarding?
How we gotta word that? Owner, owner.
Does, does a. A lessor. Have legal. Liability meet with land.
It's unlike eight hundred fifty, the lease agreement, this. Application.
Yeah.
And it's only two pages.
You brought that up. If you're gonna get all this great.
Yeah, you know, he should be, you know. You know what I mean, like he, he's washing the sands of everything. You know what I mean, that's not right. Blue, I don't care, they're not gonna be around a tree or shit.
Yeah, they change. They change owners.
Yeah.
Although St. Carf has been here for a long time, but the other ones, oh my gosh. But they went belly up pretty fast. So what are we saying, who has the legal responsibility for the life of the, at least?
Or does the? Lesser have some legal responsibility? For their land?
Well. We should say he's least of any responsibility. That's what we read right now.
But for tax purposes. And for monitoring the sixty one A. The assessors. Need to know. Yeah, was, was the property owner.
And be interesting.
And who's, who's responsible for the taxes.
Right.
And uh. And the chapter land.
Also, we need to see what sort of hay yield they have in the past of that, because. There's, there's many hay up there.
He sold this hay. To the goats, I'm like, poor goats, oh my gosh. Talk about into Jeff. So there's a lesser hopefully who responds.
Or and as, as Ron said, the way it's written up, maybe we say it needs to be. Revised, revised, so that the, the landowner has some vested. Interest in, in.
Yeah.
Not, it's, it's you take care of it.
Yeah. If Blue, you know, he's gotta be responsible.
So, um, my, my goats, um. Okay.
We we got some information to. And and anything more, I'll add it to that document. Ideas, you guys use through the same.
I mean. As far as the future. Meeting Tuesday of next week at ten AM. I can make it work, just know it's gonna be. The same kind of pressure for me. To get out.
So if we, if we do. On Tuesday, we gotta get this.
Tuesday would be the eleventh.
Yeah, cause we gotta deal with so many. Things, so we're not.
Well, this right now. This decision has to be.
Yeah, no, I'm saying.
I think the list that you created today should be on priority list.
Yeah, but there is a many. We we've still got the deconditioning, we've got the insurance bonds to. Though we've got, well, the select board has to do the. Oh, they're doing payment and lower taxes. So they don't do pilot on that.
Do we know? Why they gotta be in sixty one A to doing payment and lower taxes?
I think that would be. What?
Blue wave.
Blue wave.
That that needs to be solidified somehow.
By the select board.
By the select board, but it's gotta be included in our conditions. You know, that's part of the decision, they write if. We need to let them know.
Great, where where would you find if, um, there is? Water available? At a, at a close proximity to that property? And if there isn't, that. We need a water truck in town to. In a worst case scenario.
That's the thing where we said fire department needs to write conditions for. Uh, fire, but they. If it's the same as St. Carth. They let it go. They they don't do anything, they're hands off, they don't pump water in it. They don't do anything, that suppression is supposed to work, but it doesn't. They dump chemicals on it, I guess.
But they're supposed to put water in to keep everything else cool. That's what they do.
I know what they're. What what fire department is going to do is kind of what they did for St. Carth when they said. We watch it, we stand around and we get the trees around and we bring the trucks around. And whatever's in the middle. But you can talk to Adam and, but that's why we have that, isn't it? Well, put a punch.
Do we do next Tuesday? And we're just, the only thing on the agenda will be.
This.
Conditions.
Okay.
And then this is. There are always time when you can answer.
And that is.
Can I get you to sign this again, cause I put your name as Garfield?
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Maybe you wanna send it out like that.
Diverting for just a second, do you have the? Language for the announcement that you read at the mortuary and that I can take from you? To transition to my minutes? Cause what I had in minutes was what we put it online and I like.
You wanna just copy and paste up?
Sure, do you have it in?
It go on the town website, it it's the announcement.
Yeah.
I'll give it to you.
Okay, hold on.
It's a warrant, the town.
It's the town. Warrant, and it's, I've got off the announcement from Mr. Blackthorne.
It lets word agenda?
Yeah, I think it's.
The minutes.
No, agenda. But actually it was.
October thirtieth?
It's actually the notice for.
The town.
Yeah. Special comm meeting.
Yeah.
That's where I read it off of. I thought it was more. It was pretty extensive.
I'd love to just cut and paste, where did you say? On the notice?
There should be. Temporary mortuary. You can ask.
The solar, the two solar projects that you're working on right now, will they fall in with the mortuary or they?
Well. That's why we need to get them decisions. So that they can decide whether or not they wanna comply with our. Conditions and if they agree to our conditions, our decision. Then they will be held to the current by law. But if they refuse or don't proceed with the plan. Then they would resubmit under new bylaw.
So, so that list. Can be.
The conditions need to be. Bulletproof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also. Did you, did you? Get out of that, that. They're. Exempt from the the new bylaws.
Yeah, well, right. If they move forward. What we condition this on the, on the decision.
The, put an application, be raised.
Yeah, you're right, to just.
You know, you know, like, you know, like if, like the state. Can this one? Can this is.
Oh, yeah.
You know, why can't we do something?
We can, I think it's. As long as they're not. Crazy. This is, this is where the town.
So expensive.
Yeah.
Right now, to renew my license.
Yeah, they're town.
Yeah. It's, I mean, just the application, you don't get it, you're right. The old bylaws, it's double.
Where, or how does the town? Get taxed on?
I'm not sure. You know what I mean? I thought. When they say you're low taxes. And that shit happens.
Oh, and it's a PDM.
You know.
I can uh, I can uh, paste it myself if you send it. Whatever you need, I. I have the D O B F report now, I have to.
I believe that I took care of all of the residents. Filling properly, so it's just. I mean, I can type this out, but it's gonna take forever.
Well, you could say see. September seventeenth.
It is, it is, I guess it's. Completely changing, so there's not.
I make a motion that we close immediately, second. All in favor?
I.
I.
We didn't do that with our chairman.
He's been disert.
I thought he was here.
Actually, before we close, I make a motion that we meet next Tuesday.
You got it.
Telling them that they weren't working. They just sat there.
How did you costume go over?
He's not one thirty.
No, it's twelve thirty. Yeah. They gotta be to work for.
Okay, folks. Have a great day.
I don't.
We want to put pictures around the old bedroom. Those ghosts, those ghosts are gonna be crying like. For me too.
I don't know what.
Oh, can we make sure that that's all shut down, please? Like the meetings closed and.
All right, thank you everyone, thank you.
Hey, we have a close meeting.
We did.
The vice chair stepped in.
Thank you, let's cheer. I just wanted to share. You guys, I I got to a bunch of more stuff from.
If you say. Are we done?